My name is Rosie DiAlbado and I'm here to say a few words about Darren Jackson, a wholehearted support coach because he is truly invaluable to our community. He has not only developed players' mental toughness, but he also served as a guiding force in their lives. When my daughter Natalie Morales was battling cancer, Coach Jackson was not more than just a coach to her. He became a strong supportive assistant during an incredibly challenging time. His unwavering dedication and compassion had made a profound impact fostering resilience in children's and providing comfort, support to our families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker for this evening will be Steve Eos. Sorry if I said that wrong. Oh, Enoz, okay, sorry about that.
Hopefully, I can get through this in three minutes. Fifteen years ago, we had to find somebody that could coach our daughter, Jordan Enoz, because she picked up a pick-up basketball game and some softball coach saw her and said, "Holy cow, this girl's good." And she'd never played basketball before. And he pointed us in the direction of Darren Jackson. The rest is history. We became close friends and within two minutes, Deb and I saw him working with our daughter. We're like, "That's the guy. That's the guy that's going to teach her how to be the best she can possibly be." I have sat up and talked with this man until 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning after the good times and the bad for years. His entire mind, body, and soul are for the betterment of his young ladies. To leave his program, whether they played all the time or not, that they became even stronger individuals in life and understand that life doesn't always play fair. That's up to them as to how far and how much effort they put in, is how the results will play forward in what they want to achieve in anything in life. Because as soon as they let up, life will always be there, sitting around the corner, waiting for them to let their guard down. The man has found his platform from which to teach through basketball. For some, it's just basketball, but not to him. It's far more than that. And I've witnessed the ladies that have played for him before my daughter, during my daughter, and after my daughter continuously come back or reach out to him to thank him for what they taught them and molded them for what's coming in life. And none of it had to do with basketball. It was about what they've done in life. You see, there's far more to life than basketball. Basketball is just part of the fun. It's the life lessons that matter from the best of coaches. And Coach Jackson personifies that. The winning of basketball games, league titles, CCS titles are all just party bonuses. My daughter, who happened to be his starting point guard for four years, led his teams to three straight CCS championship games and then won two in a row. They went to state playoffs three times. She went off to college to play basketball, and she even picked up another sport there, rugby. I wouldn't let her play football here. And she became an All-American in that sport as well. But you know what she never talks about when she comes home? Basketball. Anything to do with basketball at home. Those times she only shares with her teammates. What she does talk about is how strong and determined to get to where she wants to get in life from the truth that Coach Jackson shared with them and to give them all that important belief in themselves from someone other than their mom and dad. And that's where he shines.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Money Maslamoney. I am an 18-year teacher in the Salinas High School District. Darren Jackson was one of the first people I met coming to Salinas to begin my career. Over the years, Darren has been a huge influence on myself as a young man, teacher, and athletic director. Darren was always involved in the lives of his student athletes and a valuable asset to our community. Over the years, I've seen several of his team members become responsible adults and several have become teachers and professionals in our community. Darren has dedicated the last 24 years to our community and student athletes. Please reinstate him immediately and allow him to continue his legacy in education-based athletics. Thank you all for your time and efforts.
Yeah, my name is Kelvin Winham. I'm actually the chief investigator for the public defender's office. I'm in this community, working for the county for over 34 years. I like to say that I have roots in this community, but I don't just have roots in this community. I have trees, okay? Strong trees. And sometimes when people make these type of decisions, I don't think they can see the forest for the trees. Now, look behind you. This is a forest, all right? But we got one tree that we're here to support. That we're all here to support. And I would like for this man to be reinstated because primarily, he deserves more than what he got. Way more, okay? Now, if he's not reinstated, you won't see me at another basketball game, won't see me at any sports at North High. Not because I don't want to see the sport, it's because of what has occurred. And it's ridiculous. I actually don't even believe we're here, to be totally honest with you, okay? Now, for me, I'm actually related to him. Even if I wasn't, I'd be here. I'd be here. I'd be like any of the parents that he has coached their kids. And he hasn't even coached my kid, all right? He hasn't coached his niece. But the fact is, is that this man deserves so much more than what he was given. He was disrespected in my regard. He was... This is ridiculous, to be totally honest with you, because no one with his record would have been treated this way. No one. And I'm just here to support him, okay? Just like everyone else. So I would suggest whoever made this decision, they need to start looking at the forest and not just that tree. Because he's stronger than all that. And I think he's going to rebound from this. He's going to rebound from this. I trust that because it occurred to him years ago when he coached at Alvarez, right? They brought in Jim Reer, kicked him out, and he found himself another job, so he rebounded. It's going to happen again if he's not reinstated at North High. Thank you.
My name is Avner Galopi. I'm a senior attending Rachel San Juan, and I am honored to speak on behalf of Coach Darren Jackson. Going into high school, I was afraid to play on varsity level until I was coached by Coach Jackson. To others, he may just seem like a coach that coaches at North Salinas High School, and that has been there for X amount of years. To me, he is my true hero. He has made me the man that I am today. He believed in me when no one saw any potential in me. Coach put me on the varsity level as an eighth grader. Something I'll never forget that he has told me is, "Son, go out there and play your game. You have been putting in the hard work and deserve this opportunity." Since that day, summer of 2021, Coach Jackson has motivated me to become the best version of me. And I'm not just talking about the best basketball player I can be. I'm talking about the young man on and off the court that I am today. First thing, as you walk into the gym, he will tell you, "If you have respect for me, I will have respect for you." Being a player for Jackson All-Stars during the summer for the past four years has taught me the respect, loyalty, hard work, and discipline. I have played for many basketball programs, but Coach Jackson has made me push harder than ever during practices and games. He has done so much for the community of Salinas by helping boys and girls become better at basketball players and the character we have by helping boys become better. It is rare to see people like Coach Jackson that puts hundreds of hours working with over hundreds of players each summer for many years to help your kid become a better player and give them that opportunity to play at the next level. It is not easy to win multiple league titles and CCSs, which speaks of how effective he is as a coach. One day, I hope to come back to my hometown and continue Coach Jackson's legacy and show his leadership. Thank you.
And Mamie Robinson will be next, followed by Darren Jackson.
Mrs. Dr. Galván, and thank you for not cold-calling us and giving us a heads-up that we were going to come on next. I started playing basketball for Coach Jackson when I was in middle school, and I continued to play for him when I was in high school at North High in 2003. I not only seen him as a coach, but just a great mentor. He was there for us as a team and made us feel like a family. He always made us feel welcome. Just like you've heard already from many other people, he is not just a coach. I'm a product of basically his coaching us into being productive citizens of the community. So I'm a product of that, and I can stand here and say that I owe him that because of all the discipline that he taught us. Not only is he a great coach, Coach Jackson, as you can hear from everyone else for decades, has been a mentor to everybody that has played for him. Hearing that he was let go after decades of leading the Vikings Girls Basketball Team to victories has left me with unanswered questions. First, and most important, being why was he let go with no justification? Second, why was he allowed to train the Girls Basketball Team and let go with weeks to go before the start of the season? That part is unsettling for me because it seems as if he was being used to train the girls and to let go right before the season after he was done doing so. And lastly, was the contract that he signed for this basketball season honored as written? Was it followed? Was he let go with proper protocol? After decades of dedication to North Salinas High and our district, I believe these questions need to be answered, and the decision to let him go needs to be reconsidered as it is unjust. Please reevaluate the decision made by North Salinas High to let Coach Jackson go and bring him back to continue to lead the Vikings to victory.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Gavia. Welcome. I wish you nothing but success on your journey here with the Salinas Union High School District. It bothers me a lot to be here tonight, but I have to because I spent over 35 years working in this school district. I started as a campus supervisor. I did that for quite a while. And then I worked up and opened up the new school at Harden Middle School as a campus supervisor over there, and I moved into an activity director job where I helped kids with the sports. I know some of you guys here. I first started coaching. The president, his was the first guy that started coaching when he was the PE instructor and I think that I led direct at Assisale Middle School. So I'm here because I think it's important that you appreciate people that give up their time and work in the community to make your community a better place and make our kids better people for our community and keep our kids safe. And all the time that I put in there, I mean, a lot of it, you know, I did it because it's something that I believe is a calling. I think everybody have a calling on their life, and I didn't know mine for a while, but I kept on coaching and I kept figuring it out. It's not about just winning the basketball game. It's about changing kids' lives and winning their hearts. And so I dedicated... I guess why it bothered me so much because I dedicated my time, my effort, countless hours, and to be treated like I wasn't even there. You know, I didn't get no explanation, but there was a meeting pulled in. We got a new AD pulled in. There was a meeting on a Wednesday with Dr. White, one of their administrators and athletic director. To be honest with you, when I walked in the room, I felt really uncomfortable. I felt like it was set up some kind of way because of the way the seating was. So I felt really uncomfortable. I was facing the guy with the new AD. I was facing him like I was facing Tracy Feliz. I was facing him for like for me and him to get in an altercation. And I was... The principal and athletic director was right there. So they began to ask me questions about what's going on. So I replied that... I replied, you know, I didn't call this meeting, so I don't understand what's really going on. But to be a long story short, for someone, then we figured it out. Everything was good on that deal. And she said, "Okay, you go back to..." Everybody agreed, "Go back to coaching. I've signed my contract. I've been working with my kids like I supposed to. I did all that." So we all agreed that, "Okay, everything is fine." A week later, which is that following Thursday, I get an email. "I need you to come back in. We need to have..." Says the email topic was, "It's time to meet." I'm like, "What's going on?" So I called Dr. White. Couldn't get in touch with her. She emailed, she texted me and said, "You know, I need to talk to you in person." So on the Friday, that Friday, I walked in there and all she told me, I said, "So what's going on?" So she said, "Well, we're not going to bring you back." And I said, "Well, why?" And she stared at me with almost tears in her eyes, but no tears came out, but almost tears in her eyes. And she looked at me and she said, after about a minute, minute and a half, she said, "You know why." With all the things that have been going on at North Salinas High School with guys that coach and stuff like that, and when you leave somebody like that and you leave that out there blank like that, anybody can come to their own conclusion. I'm a man of God. I'm a man of faith. I treat people right. I'm a respectful man, and I work my tail off of these young kids. That's why they're here, you know? I don't get a benefit out of that. You give them a measly check, but you know, people don't coach for checks. I coach to change lives. And all the 24 years I have put over at that one school, not all counting the other schools and stuff I've been in there, to just throw me up under the bus like that like three weeks before the season starts? If you wanted to get rid of me, I wouldn't have no problem with that. Tell me from the beginning, right after the season, "No, we're moving a different way." And then I can accept that. They give me an opportunity to look for something else. But when you just do this to me and just like give me with no explanation, nothing, and I still... And then the contract says that you're supposed to, on the back of the contract said, you're supposed to give a letter. And I called down to the district, I talked to her, I think her name was Humberto Patricia. I don't know if this young lady can verify that, that I came down there that same day. And I'm going to make it quick as I can, but this is important to me. You know, if I take a minute, this is important because nobody can tell my story like me. You'll never find a man like me, though. I might help your kid. I don't even know you, but if I met your kid and I see that he or she need help, I'm there. I don't have to know your kid. It's about a community. We got a community to build for each other, to look out for our young people. And Darren Jackson, which is me, I did that. I strive to do that every single day. Three and a half months ago, I lost my mom. And if I wouldn't be in here, I wouldn't be in here if she wouldn't want me to fight for what I believe in, what's right. I'm not going to sit here and just say that I'm perfect, because I'd be lying. Ain't nobody perfect. But I'm a good man, and I deserve it. Whether the decision you made, like my brother said earlier, I'm going to rebound. I pray on everything that I do, and the Lord tells me to come here and speak my opinion. And I know you got to go, but you know, if you can do things, why don't you let me just do what I'm supposed to do? And then at the end of the year, you want to say, "Hey, Darren, you know, we gave you that last year, we're gone." Then they give me opportunity to do other things next year if I choose to. Don't just throw me to the war when I haven't done anything. There's no justification. If there would have been some justification, you would know it and I would know it, and it would already be. I still haven't got an answer yet. Do you think a person for 24 years, Mr. Feliz, you know what kind of person I am? A 24 solid year, and that's all I deserved? It could have been your kid. It was that young lady right there, one of those kids. I watched her wear, she growing up. It doesn't make a difference what color, what you look like. It's about helping people. It's about doing things right, and it's about treating people right with respect. And I'm so hurt deep inside because those young girls have been working out for a month and a half, working with me, and we was on the poverty road. It isn't about the... I done did all the winning. It's more than winning. I learned that a long time ago. It's about changing life. And you have opportunity to help me. You have, I can't remember this, you have opportunity to help me continue to change life. It's your decision to help me change life. You're not doing me a favor. We're helping our community. Like you said, building is strong. So I asked you tonight, don't do it because you feel sorry for me. Let's do what's right and treat people for the right. I thank you and may God bless you all.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Yala. I'm class 2010, North Salinas High, and I've known Coach Jackson for more than half my life. Even before high school, I knew two things, who Coach Darren Jackson was and that I wanted to play for him. And making that inter-district transfer my freshman year is probably the best decision in my high school career, finally becoming the first CCS championships at North Salinas High School in 2010. Yes, people are scared of his disciplinary ways, but any player that has played for him, I could speak on behalf of them and say that it only made us better on and off the court. He's always been more than just a high school basketball coach, like you've already heard. He held us accountable to not only be good student athletes, but to also be good humans in our communities as well. Even when I had family issues, this man was there, making sure I was okay. Even when I couldn't afford a season for Jackson All-Stars, he said, "Don't worry about the money, kid. I got you covered. You just come play." The countless hours of practice shooting with us in the gym, I couldn't have asked for a better coach, still calling me to check on me till this day. Then being able to coach with him back at North Salinas High School and being able to win a league title was really full circle for me, and that's something I can never thank him for. North Salinas High's principal should just give him more than just a text message or an email, and I think that he should be reinstated. He's been nothing but great throughout these past 24 years, and I think I could speak on anybody else besides this room, and I just want to say thank you, Coach Jackson, for being Coach Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Pimentel, and I am a mother to a student that was Coach Jackson's student. I am the one that started a petition because I felt like the need of being a voice for the students, not only the students, but for the community. And I will let her speak.
First and foremost, I would like to thank all parents and fellow students and all of you guys who took the time out of their night to come out and support the reinstatement of our beloved Girls Basketball Coach. The dismissal of Coach Jackson left the entire high school girls' basketball community in a state of shock and distress. Over the course of the past few weeks, my fellow teammates and I have been stressed and troubled by the thought of us having to go through a season without our coach or possibly not having another season at all. Given the information, our students have been provided. My students, my teammates and I were told by our own sports director that the North High currently doesn't have a replacement lined up for the upcoming basketball season, nor is willing to coach girls' basketball. But you know who was Coach Jackson. As many of you know, Coach Jackson plays a very crucial role in the girls' basketball community. He's the coach that athletes around the world not only want, but need. He takes time out of his days to be there for us every day at practice and games. He pushes us to achieve success on and off the court, which includes the classrooms and our grades. He also sees the best in all of his players and makes sure to give everyone a fair shot. Nowadays, it's unfortunate to say, but there's been many cases where favoritism plays a role when it comes to tryouts or just playing in general, but not Coach Jackson. Being a first-year basketball player for him, he saw potential in me and encouraged my teammates and I. And even when games weren't going our way and were tough, he never gave up on us. Coach Jackson not only pushes us to achieve success, but he's the coach who simply just wants the best for his players. Before he was released, he got us new equipment, and whether it's school properties or not, he went on his way to look for the best equipment for our upcoming season and all of his basketball girls. As you can see, he wasn't just simply a coach, but an inspiration for us athletes, which is why we will continue to stand by him. Thank you.
Just very quickly, I did present you with a list of 663 signatures that we have obtained so far and counting. So we do feel the need of this dismissal to be reviewed. We would appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
As Ms. Glorietta Roland is getting ready, I want to announce the last two speakers will be Steve Duran and Adriana Pelayo Sanchez.
Great. Good evening, Board President and Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't have any prepared remarks, so please forgive me if I ramble. I stand before you as a proud parent of a daughter that played for Coach Jackson and was a member of the first CCS champions. So I don't know what your justification may have been in the decision you made, but I will say that the impact that Coach Jackson has had in this community over this many years will be lasting and hopefully will continue. It is so important that our young ladies and young men, of course, have a strong person to provide them guidance, mentorship, and just to give them that toughness they need. When my daughter played with Coach Jackson, I will say it wasn't always perfect. They went at each other quite often, but it really instilled in her toughness and really provided her what she needed to continue in her education in all the different aspects. I ask that you consider that. Thank you again for the time for myself and all of the others who are here in support. We appreciate all that you do, and hopefully you will reconsider the decision that has been made. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. I actually came here for an agenda. I came here about a month ago. I think you guys remember me. I came here for the community service hours. So I had an agenda to follow up today. I actually was not planning to come to support my brother Darren Jackson today. That was not on my agenda. So we, of course, you know, we've known each other from coaching for many, many years. Met Darren in 1998. I'm going to age myself just a little bit at Harden Middle School. But this is... I'm shocked today and after on the phone call with Darren, trying to figure out what happened, right? I've worked with personnel, HR for decades, trying to figure out what happened because the setup was pretty set up, right? As a coach, I'm coaching at Harden Middle School right now, right? And I'm ready to start my season. We're an open gym. Darren's been an open gym coaching kids. Coaching jobs are pretty much set for who's going to coach this upcoming season. He's got no opportunity as far as in this district to coach because all the coaches are set up already. So for me, this was a setup. It makes no sense as a coach. So then I sat with Darren and said, "Hey, Darren, how about your disciplinary..." I mean, you work for a district. So there should be, you know, files of disciplinary actions that were taken because you don't just fire somebody. We're in need in California. We don't have staff that want to work right now. So I'm just trying to figure out what happened. I got a letter as a parent about what we wanted from our superintendent. They asked for transparency. That's what I asked for. So my follow-up, two follow-ups. Dan Burns, I came here to congratulate him a month ago to find out we're spending additional $305,000, $610,000 for two superintendents. Two superintendents. At least for me, it's his first in history to have two superintendents at the Salinas Union High School District, trying to figure out what's that about. I haven't seen... I haven't seen transparency from the board yet. I haven't seen the justification besides, I don't know, a consultant. That's what I got as a parent. It's a consultant. You are beyond capable to reign our district. That's why you were selected. Third, community service, I'm going to bring this up one more time. I am volunteering to help rewrite the policy for community service. I'm waiting for a phone call from somebody. During COVID, there was a change during COVID. During COVID, there was a change during COVID, right? We went for like 60 hours or 80 hours to like 40, and that was done rapidly. I think this change could also be done rapidly. This, this weekend again, there was a community asking for volunteers on Friday night, and I'm thinking, these kids can't volunteer because we got this policy where it has to be pre-approved, control again. So anyway, thank you for, for hearing me, but all I ask is, is Board, please go back to North Salinas High School. You know, let's see the records. Because I, I'm confused why you fire somebody who is beyond capable of doing this job.
Hello. Hey, I didn't write anything either. I graduated '07. My name's Adriana Sanchez. You were my PE coach. I went to school with your sister, and I am, I was ASB president at the time. I was most spirited, elected most spirited because I was so passionate about the school, not because the teachers made the impact, but because Coach Jackson made the impact. He would walk down the hallways. As soon as we saw him walk down the hallways, it wasn't because we were scared, it's because, okay, well, we better get our grades right. Our grades better be right because we're going to see him walk down the hallways. And if they weren't right, then, you know, we were going to be running. And I don't know if nowadays, if we want to hand out participation awards, but Coach Jackson doesn't do that. You know, you guys can be all sensitive and emotional, whatever, but Coach Jackson's going to give us the discipline that he needs. But I can tell you right now, I'm 34 years old, and the first person I called when my mom got sick with cancer was Coach Jackson because I knew that he was going to give me the power and the uplifting that I needed. And he gave me his time and energy, and it was genuine. My mom was a single mom, and Coach Jackson filled in that void straight up, straight up. He can take the job of all you sitting here. He can take the job of all the teachers that make the biggest impact in anybody's life. Regardless of the result, it's for the birds. It's for the birds. You know, they're going to say what they want to say. Don't let it get to you. You're a legend, and you made the biggest impact in this community. It's priceless. And you giving up your, your time for your son and your family, missed his basketball games, and your family was understanding because they saw the bigger picture, because you were going to move mountains. You were moving mountains, and his wife and his, Jaden, understood that, understood the mission. And you know what? Jaden is a well-rounded kid. Well-rounded kid. I worked 72 to 84 hours, 96 hours, sometimes a week as a nurse in the prison, and because I am the first one there, because I am disciplined, I have the work ethic, and I am, guess what? I'm not tired because you know what? I keep pushing forward because he taught me that. He taught me that. No textbook, no amount of studying can get, can teach me the life lessons that he's taught me. And yeah, that's it. I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted, and I, you know what? Something needs to change, and it needs to change by tomorrow, or you know what? Just let them go. Let them go because they're not worth it. You know, they, they can't see the bigger pictures. They don't see that you're taking kids off the streets. They don't see that you're, he's helped me. I'm a single mom too. He, he came up to me, hey, let your son play, you know, don't pay, don't pay. Guess what? I worked my ass off because he taught me and I paid, okay? And I'll, I'll continue to pay and I'll continue to do what I got to do. And you know what? I am tired as hell right now, but you know, I made time to come and, and show my face. And that's all I have to say. We love you.